Good evening. Mr. Rappley, can we turn the volume up a little bit? I think you need to turn it up on the, the unit. That's not going to make a difference. And he's below you, not on the computer. Is that better? You can't let him? Janek, can you hear me back there? Okay, we're gonna call, we'll just go from here. We'll call the Castle Hills regular city council meeting to order and determine if forum is present. Forum is present, we have Mr. May joining us virtually with his camera on. We will start with the invocation. We have Dr. Cleo Kukea from Epiphany Anglican Church joining us. Thank you for being here with us. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm Dr. Kukea and I'm the pastor for Epiphany Anglican Church. We meet actually on Rolletto Drive, but now that the address has changed again, they use a 410. We have been there for a good thirteen years. We shared the campus of Covenant Presbyterian Church. So it's a pleasure for me to come here and do the invocation in the we're in, 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 in front of the council here in the city that welcomes us and provides security for all of us when we are really worshiping there. So, but I want to start with something that is very important for us. It's Romans, chapter thirteen, one through two. These two verses, they say, "Let everyone be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which God has established." "The authorities that exist have been established by God. Consequently, whoever rebels against the authority is rebelling against that which God has instituted, and those who do so will bring judgment on themselves." So we as people of God, we respect the civil authority and all our elected officials, and I will be praying for all of you as we go tonight. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, creator of heaven and earth, we are confident that your sovereignty place every leader and that you, you have marked the days for which you use them for your own purposes. By your mighty hand, we pray that you, you would be merciful to our leaders here in the city of Castle Hill to work in the hearts of those to whom you give authority. We pray for peace. We pray for unity. But whether in conflict or in unity, we are confident that you are implementing your plan and accomplishing your will. So Father, we pray that tonight will be peaceful, that you will give wisdom to our council, but also to the people in the public, those who are sitting here, that all that they will deliberate or they will debate before the good of all citizens of Castle Hill. This we ask in your name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, next up, we have citizen comments. We have four people signed up. I believe the first one's Jason Braden, your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hi, everybody. I'm Jason Braden. I'm at 503 Antler Drive. Um, I just want to say, first of all, I love everything y'all are doing. Y'all are fantastic, and I really appreciate the, the, the collaboration, the spirit that y'all have. I've come to kind of be a little bit of a warning. Um, I, I recently worked for SAISD as one of the directors for special education, and I, I don't know if you've heard, we've been through, we're going through rightsizing with SAISD where we're closing possibly nineteen schools. Um, I've been to thirty-three community meetings with SAISD, and to the meeting, every meeting said the community organizations did not get involved with the schools fast enough. Every single community organization, every single neighborhood association said, why didn't we, why didn't we get in, why weren't we brought in before you decided to put these schools on the closing list? I'm, I'm here in the spirit of that because I feel that, that, that San Antonio ISD is about ten years ahead of Northeast. We have several schools in our, in our area, Jackson Keller, Castle Hills, Lee Churchill, and even if you think about Ridgeview and things like that, that if, if we don't start to be forward-thinking about decline in enrollment, we could lose those schools. And the last thing we want as a city is closed schools, where we're trying to find, we're trying to find ways to use the school or utilize the school, and that's another issue that, that, that they don't, there's not enough usage for nineteen closed schools in SAISD. So what do we do with a closed Jackson Keller, which has already been closed in the eighties and nineties, and then we also closed West Avenue a few years ago to create a early childhood? Um, I, I feel that we just need to make sure that we're being proactive and being, and being forward-thinking in our, in our, in our neighborhood association with our, with our schools to make sure that they're strong, that people who live in Castle Hills send their kids to Castle Hills area schools, and that, that we don't lose sight of the fact that, that we could be those people who are retroactively trying to save a closed school, which is nearly impossible. So just a warning to everybody, I just want to kind of get that on the radar, but I think that, I think that's something that we should definitely explore as a city. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next up, we have Andy Ronan.
Hello, Andy Ronan, 138 Honeysuckle Lane. I'd like to thank Ryan for the job he's done to get our streets in order. They're looking fantastic. I'm up here tonight to kind of figure out what our plan is to keep the streets in good order for years to come, so we don't find ourselves in this problem again. So that's kind of what I came, but I don't know if tonight's the night to ask that question or not, but that's, uh, that's why I'm here.
Well, appreciate you being here. We can't respond to your actual question, but you can always get with Ryan, who has a plan for most, most everything we have going on, and he can share that with you.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have Luann and Guy Stidham. Okay. Uh, and Robert Nguyen.
Good evening to, uh, Robert Nguyen, 209 Garden View. My question is about the budget and the worth of money. You all passed a nine-month budget and twelve months of revenue. Difference is a million dollars in revenue over the expenses expected in the nine months that you all budgeted for. Would you all let me know and the citizens know where that money's going? And I would like to comment that it should go back to the taxpayers. This nine months of revenue and a nine-month benefit. And that leads to a twelve months of revenue over the nine-month budget of expenses, an extra million dollars, according to the city manager. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda. Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda.
Okay, that was a motion by Mr. May to adopt it, and second by Mr. Smith. Any, any discussion? Ryan, you have a comment?
Yes, on the, on the financials, we need to move that to the next one that says ending May 31st.
Okay, so this would just be approval for the five point one for the minutes, correct?
Yes, for September 12, 2023.
Mr. May, you're good with that?
That is good.
Mr. Smith?
That's fine.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Uh, next up, we have a public hearing on application for a special use permit from Seema Osari for SUP at sixty-four twenty-three Blanco Road, Castle Hills, Texas, seven eight two one three, more particularly described as CB five zero zero eight, block two, lot fifty-three, city of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas, to modify the zoning of the property to allow use of the property for microblading services. It is six forty-one, and we're going to open the public hearing. If there is nobody to speak, we will close the public hearing at six forty-one and move on to item six point two, discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash ten dash ten on an application request for a special use permit from Seema Ozzi for a SUP at sixty-four twenty-three Blanco Road, Castle Hills, Texas, seven eight two one three, more particularly described as CB five zero zero eight, block two, lot fifty-three, city of Castle Hills, Texas, Bear County, to modify the zoning for a property to use for the property for microblading services. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item was in front of the zoning commission last week, October third. Uh, they passed it unanimously five zero, uh, to move it to council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Do we have a motion? Mr. Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash ten dash ten and the application request for the special use permit for Seema Ozzi, as otherwise described in the agenda item six point two.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. May. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, any, you're abstaining? Okay, let the record show up. Ms. Haley's abstaining motion passes four to one abstention. Uh, next, we have discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash ten dash ten dash eight by the city council of the city of Castle Hills on the crime control and prevention district operating budget for fiscal year beginning January first, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Chief Zuniga?
Mayor, Council, this item was up for the agenda last month, and there was a correction that needed to be made, so we moved it. Uh, but particular questions, this was passed by the CCPD unanimously. Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry. Um, the CCPD board passed this, uh, last month unanimously to move on to council. We had it on the September fifteenth or twelfth meeting, and like I said, there was a styling error on the agenda, so it's here tonight for your approval. Specific questions to, uh, Chief Zuniga can answer those regarding any monetary related items that the CCPD board has, or any questions you might have for him for the operations of the, the CCPD budget.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Chief?
I have, uh, like I said, I will entertain any questions. Uh, there was, just like the general budget, we did adjustments to the CCPD budget, uh, to make it a nine-month, uh, budget, just like the, uh, the general budget.
Thanks, Chief. Council, any questions, comments, motions? Mr. Joyce?
Mayor, I move that we, uh, approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash ten dash ten dash A by the city council of Castle Hills on the crime control and prevention budget, operating budget for fiscal year, beginning January twenty-one twenty-four, ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Haley, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Uh, next up, we have discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash ten dash ten dash B, amending sections twenty-six twenty-one through twenty-six thirty of the article two of chapter twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Junked Vehicles. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Obviously, this came up from citizens' concerns about junk vehicles. Uh, this ordinance now will allow code compliance to address those. This is a, a different mechanism to be able to address those junk vehicles. Um, Mr. Schnall worked with Mr. Henry on this ordinance. I do believe it mirrors a couple other cities, but I'll let Mr. Schnall detail that. Um, but this puts into the mechanism to address junk vehicles that we prior didn't have in our codes, um, brought up by residents in the past. So, thank you.
Mr. Rappley, can you give a little more detail on what changed, generally speaking, for everybody joining us?
Specifically, I'll, I'll let Mr. Schnall come to that matter. It was drafted by him from what was added for definitions and what the enforcement? Go ahead, Mr. Schnall, sorry.
Well, Mr. Rappley just summarized what the main changes are, to expand the definition of what a junk vehicle is and to beef up a little bit, um, some of the methodology for enforcement um, and in how the city through its, its police department and its code enforcement officer can declare a junk vehicle a nuisance and then begin an enforcement process um, through the municipal court. I mean, there will need to be, we, we do need to follow some due process requirements and, and, in, in most, most importantly, stay consistent with the applicable section, the applicable chapter in the Texas Transportation Code. We have to stay within the parameters that the state law sets, and one of those parameters is that um, you can't just go on a piece of property because you want to. Uh, there needs to be a request for an administrative search warrant um, that would then authorize a police officer or the code enforcement officer to go onto the property and to inspect, uh, what vehicles there are, determine if any of the vehicles meet our new definition of being a junk vehicle, and that would allow further action through the municipal court. Um, it is a somewhat time-consuming process, but it's designed to give the owner occupant of a piece of property fair notice that something has to get remedied, or else the city's going to take action to remedy it for them.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Mr. Joyce?
Uh, Mr. Schnall is one of the items within there says that you have, the vehicles have to be visible from a public way. Is that going to work for what the gentleman is after?
Well, I think what, the way we will address that because of what the gentleman who came several meetings ago is through the getting a search warrant. I mean, if, if there is, the vehicles sub, visible from the street, then it's an easier process, but with a proper backup and a, a application for a search warrant can be presented to Judge McCall, and he can make the decision about whether it's adequate to authorize the actual onsite on the property search. Um, so we're trying to stay, as I said earlier, in, in line with what the transportation code allows and yet try and strengthen things. One thing's, one thing the transportation code specifically allows the city to do is to expand its definition of what a junk vehicle is. Um, I would have loved to have put in this ordinance that it visible from a public right-of-way, a public place, or the air, but I did actually have that in my initial draft, and Mr. Zamaron and, um, uh, someone else that I consulted on it felt that we would have a hard time enforcing that and that, um, the question of who owns the air and proof how the photograph, the, that, that the gentleman presented to the city was, was created, um, and things like that made it impractical to include that language. But I think by, um, if we can get an affidavit from the gentleman who presented that photograph and present that as part of an application for a search warrant, my hope is it will be compelling enough that the court will order, authorize and issue the search warrant, and that will allow the code officer or a police officer to go onto the property, see if the vehicles on the property all have the things they need to have to not be a junk vehicle. That includes a current license plate and a current registration sticker. Um, and so if, if those vehicles are in, in operating condition and have those two things, they're probably not junk vehicles. There may be too many of them, but, um, we don't have an ordinance that says you can't have more than X vehicles on your property. But the likelihood is that some, maybe most, of those vehicles do not have a valid license plate and do not have a current registration. And so those would then meet our new definition of junk vehicle and allow the city to move forward with further action in the municipal court.
It reminds me of some complaints that, that I've heard in recent years, where in certain driveways within the city, there are quite a few vehicles, and the, uh, the code guys really felt that their hands were tied because of state law. Um, is, is that something that, at this point, then they'll be able to look at the vehicles, although they might need a warrant?
With the, with the, yes, with the search warrant, he should be able to get onto the property and do an inspection, check for VIN numbers, and thereby, uh, determine if there is a current registration, um, also run the license plates. Um, it's all part of the enforcement process. Um, you know, the hope, as, as it is with many things the council does, is that, um, citizens will comply. Um, some citizens need a little bit more of a push to comply, and that's what this process will allow. And if, if the push doesn't work, then there are further steps to be taken in the municipal court.
Thank you.
Mr. Schnall, I didn't know if you added it, the public nuisance section as well, if it becomes a public nuisance?
Well, they, the definition expands how we have a junk vehicle be a public nuisance, which then triggers these other steps that the transportation code allows.
Mr. Stim, is this the item you wanted to speak on? Or were you not signed up for an item specifically?
Well, I wasn't really planning to come up here and talk, and I appreciate all the work that's been put into this matter. As far as the air, the photograph I took from the air, that, I understand that that's problematic from a legal point of view, but what I said that night too, and I, and I want to know about this, is what about the overpass? Who owns the overpass? I mean, it's the state of Texas, but it's inside the city of Castle Hills, and you can clearly see it from there. So you don't necessarily have to, I'll, I'll sign an affidavit or whatever about the aerial photograph, but you can see all these cars just from where it goes over Honeysuckle, and it kind of bows up, so, uh, it's visible from there. That's all, and I'm glad that y'all are doing the work on it. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Council, do we have any motions, questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Danes?
Um, I move that we approve, um, ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash ten dash ten B, amending sections twenty-six through twenty, twenty-six twenty-one through twenty-six thirty of article two of chapter twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Junked Vehicles.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. We have a second? Second, Ms. Haley? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Okay, and next up, we have discussion and possible action on ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash ten dash ten dash C, amending sections thirty-four dash two and thirty-four dash eleven of the city ordinances to address bandit signs. So bandit signs are the signs that you see businesses put out on the corner of the streets that, uh, Mr. Harada and the team will end up picking up, uh, pretty quickly and addressing. These are not allowed by the city of Castle Hills, but the issue is that that, just because they're not allowed, doesn't mean that they're, that stops them. And so, uh, in discussions with Mr. Schnall and Mr. Rappley, we've adjusted this ordinance to allow the city to find these people that are putting the signs out there, so that the repeat offenders can be made aware that this is not allowed in the city of Castle Hills, and they could potentially be fined, and ultimately to make, uh, Mr. Harada's life and everybody over at Public Works' life a little bit easier and keep our city a little bit cleaner. Um, isn't really intent on driving revenue, but really, um, dissuading people from breaking our laws. So what you have in front of you is a draft amendment or draft changes to allow us to do that. Mr. Rappley, Demus, anything?
No, Mayor, I think you covered all the points that you wanted to add.
Mr. Schnall?
Mainly by definition enforcement?
Um, yeah, I think it, just to sort of answer the question that no one has asked, but might want to ask, the changes to the current ordinance, the current chapter thirty-four sign ordinance. One is the definition of bandit sign, and that is adapted from the city of San Antonio's ordinance on, the city of San Antonio's sign ordinance, and the other change is a complete rewording of subsection B of section thirty-four, um, eleven, which talks specifically about bandit signs. Um, that, that they're declared to be a public nuisance, um, and the maintenance or display of them is made an offense under our city code. The city manager or his designee is directed in order to affect the abatement of such nuisance um, whenever it exists in the city, um, that it would include by physically removing the sign or having it otherwise removed. Um, also specifically permits any citizen of the city to physically remove a bandit sign and, um, the party posting a bandit sign or the service or business advertised on the bandit sign placed in, on public property or in the public right-of-way in violation of the ordinance may be cited for the violation and upon conviction be subject to a fine in accordance with subsection D, which calls for a fine of not less than fifty dollars or more than five hundred dollars for each day the violation occurs. So again, it's designed to, um, avoid a proliferation of these, of these signs on, whether they're on, on, uh, stop signs, on utility poles, um, just stuck in the ground, um, something that, uh, many communities would like not to have um, as, as noticeable and does, you know, change the environment for the community. Um, so this is one step in trying to reduce that problem.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Council, do we have it? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash ten dash ten dash C as stated.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Joyce, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Uh, next up, we have an update on the city of Castle Hills Information Technology Capital Project. Mr. Rappley?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Excuse me. I'll go through this pretty quick. I put in front of y'all the roadmap. If you recall, the roadmap was developed, um, a few years ago to address, uh, thing, uh, our IT infrastructure, software, everything across the board. Uh, Bridgehead did an assessment and then created a roadmap to prioritize what needed to be addressed, um, based on, um, funding and the most critical things to, um, our IT environment, so, um, I, I'll put here, provided city council with an assessment of the city's IT infrastructure in December of twenty twenty-one. Uh, some of you recall, we discussed this a little bit more in detail due to some areas in executive session on this um, to address concerns regarding the city's, um, outdated and out-aging information, IT environment. As a result, this roadmap was developed, uh, detailing the priorities and expenditures needed to update the city's infrastructure. Um, I spoke at Bridgehead, they do RIT for us. Um, I have Ash Sherat and Franklin Garcia here, um, from their team. They're here just in case you all have any technical questions, um, uh, regarding this IT map here, uh, roadmap. Uh, the solutions, obviously, as I mentioned, were prioritized based on necessity, availability of funds, and the sign number was one, two, and three. This multi-year plan addressed IT concerns through this priority system, which several number one priorities have been completed already. Bridgehead, Bridgehead has also assisted the city when they helped us prepare the RFP, the selection process, and we went out for bids for the hardware related to the technology server hardware refresh project. Um, this was a modernization of our city of Castle Hills IT environment, included insulation, hardware, software, service. This was completed last year. If you recall, it's cost of about seventy-nine thousand. Uh, we utilized ARPA funds for those. The IT roadmap identified twenty-four items, the original. To date, we have The IT roadmap identified twenty-four items, the original. To date, we've completed eleven of those. I'll just kind of like, again, kind of go over these real quick. Items related to our firewall upgrade, new server hardware, again, replacing aging servers, which had been in place since two thousand eight, two thousand ten timeframe, email migration through Microsoft, full system backup with redundancy. Moving forward, we still have IT projects to address, which will cover nine items on the roadmap. Specifically, I highlighted there for you the three next items that we need to address moving forward. We are looking at areas including operating system upgrades, further Microsoft three sixty, security licensing compliance, network infrastructure research, and then network refresh system components. So that's actually going to improve areas for our network switches, and then it's going to add backup power for our new phone system that is hoping to go live, I believe, next week, which is a V O I P phone network. So we're going to have a greetings when you call directory system who to reach. So it's a full upgrade of our phone system. I think it's a huge enhancement for customer service here at the city. So we're hoping over the next two weeks that will be fully implemented. We already have the hardware. Bridgehead will come in and do the install, troubleshoot, and then we'll be going live with that new phone system. As I mentioned, that's another thing. Over the last few months, the city has rotated older desktops for more efficient laptops in every department throughout the city. The laptops were identified for mobility and the ability to transition to a work from home if necessary. Obviously, lessons learned from this past pandemic. This also established a replacement schedule for our IT hardware for future years for the organization, which had not been in place in prior years. The IT infrastructure improvements, laptops have been funded with ARPA and through the workstation upgrade fund. Bridgehead has also taken steps towards creating a more secure IT environment as per the roadmap. The roadmap's been updated. As you can see there, the city will continue to address the IT infrastructure and software improvements. Specifically on staff, I'd like to thank Louis. Mr. Zamarone led the efforts to improve the city's IT environment related to our organization and has worked with Bridgehead almost on a daily basis to address and implement items outlined in the roadmap. In closing, I do not really want to speak to specific areas of our IT environment due to advice from Mr. Schnell, of course, but potential security risks. We have representatives from Bridgehead here, as I mentioned, for technical questions. But again, if there's specific questions related to certain areas of the IT security, I could do a separate cover to counsel specifically to you and send those out through Bridgehead as well. So that's kind of my overview, quick highlight to say that we've worked very hard to improve our IT infrastructure here for years to come for the City of Castle Hills. I want to say it's a little bit more modern than what it used to be. So do you have any questions specifically, technical questions for guys from Bridgehead? Yes, sir.
Well, it's not a technical question. You should be relieved.
That's why I'm not the IT guy.
I'm with you. But anyway, I wonder if, without giving away too much, if y'all can maybe give us a sense of where we stand with respect to cybersecurity? Because that's that's a question that comes up from time to time. It's a really important question. In these days, when government entities are hacked, it seems like every month or so, you know, where do we stand compared to others and what what is y'all's opinion of our robustness of the cybersecurity?
Go ahead.
Yes, sir. We are very close to being in full compliance. A lot of the standards that we had had before have been addressed, and we're getting very close to being in a position that I would call in a very modern workspace that I would call us in a very safe environment. One of the last pieces that is on the roadmap that we would like to implement in the future, though, is ongoing training. Usually, in all in office environments, the weakest link is always your employees and the people that work around in the environment. So training and ongoing training will be our last implementation point that we'd like to get out to everybody and just making sure that they're aware of what the common security threats are in the world right now and how best to protect yourselves against those.
I think, Captain, you would have seen when we changed out the email system, how documents are in a holding pattern scan. So that's part of that process.
Yes, a lot more security on the email side right now. Thank you.
And that reminded me, because if you were here in twenty, late twenty, early twenty-one, when we did this assessment, what our grade was. So we've considerably done better over the years. You know, no pass, no play. We can play now. Okay? Yes, sir.
Sorry, one one other question. Let's see, completed you with the internet vendor to increase bandwidth to at least a hundred Mbps. I know it's a huge improvement over what it was, but it's not all that great compared to what's available. Is that is that the most that the internet provider can provide, or is that a cost thing? Or because, you know, we have three hundred at our house from AT&amp;T, and we're just a little house.
I will let Ash take that one.
It's not the best available, but it is a cost prohibitive on that area. So whenever there's the difference between what we can do at home and then what we do for businesses, it's what they call direct, DIA is what they call those circuits, and they have certain SLAs to those. So when it's put in position for a business, they guarantee ninety-nine point nine 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 uptime for those, and they charge you for that uptime. When it comes to your home service, they can give you more bandwidth, but they don't guarantee any of that service. So typically, what we like to do for most businesses, we usually try and do two circuits. So one that we know is guaranteed to be up for a certain amount of time, and then typically we'll try and find a lower-cost broadband that might have more bandwidth to it, but it's cheaper. It's just they don't guarantee that. But that way, we always have uptime no matter what.
Great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I have one quick question. So we we've got the PIV ID cards that we're working on. Is there any plan to incorporate those into the computer access for all the employees so that we have a physical analogical?
I was not aware of that, but that is definitely something that we can implement and get integrated together.
Yeah, considering we already have all the stuff on the, I think Chief Ludwig has all that stuff. So my hope was that we could integrate that completely and make it a little bit easier so that we could use that for access control as well, and that one card is the employee solution for everything.
I always love, as they say, multi-factor authentication is always the best security there is, and the more layers that we can put on to that, whether that be the way they try and say it is, there's different things that you know, there's one way to identify yourself, then there's something to identify something that you know, and then there's something physical to identify who you are, and those three layers kind of really separate the security from allowing somebody just, if they get a password, they may be able to guess your password, but they still can't get in because there's something physical that required is required for them to be able to get access. So that is definitely something we would love to implement as well.
Perfect. Well, we already have it on our side, so we just gotta marry it with the IT perspective.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I don't know. Counsel, may I have any questions?
Mr. May, do you have any questions?
I do not. Okay, thank you.
Like I said, Mayor Council, that's just an update. There's no action. If on this list, if there's areas of expenditures based on our priority of these things, we'll bring it back for council's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. And next up, we have an update and a possible action on the study for the Architectural and Engineering Service Building Assessment for the City, the Castle Hill City Hall Building performed by Ardua Group, Inc. Mr. Rapley?
Thank you, Mayor Council. We have Doug Lawrence here from Ardua, who's done the study to date and some components of that study. It was in your packet, and so what I wanted to do tonight was have him specifically here, who's done the report, who's done the assessment, answer any questions you have and discuss sort of next step based on his recommendation. So let me let me fire that up, Doug.
Mayor, Council, thank y'all for having me here tonight. I'll try to make this as painless as possible. This presentation will go fairly quick. The gist of the matter, or the gist of this assessment was structural-based, and we were taking a look at the building and comparing it to a conceptual layout that was provided us and to determine capacity or it's the buildings, this existing buildings' ability to support the loads that were planned in that conceptual plan, as well as determine any repairs that may be needed for the building. So with that said, kind of jump the gun here on Ryan. It's okay. 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 All right. So I personally conducted the assessment, and let me back up. For those of y'all who don't know me, my name's Doug Lawrence. I'm with Ardua. I've been practicing structural engineering for about twenty years. And in in my time, I've done quite a few of these assessments. This is not very unique. I've went around the full facility, and I went into every space that I could I could gain access to to assess the condition of the the materials of the of construction of this facility. So what I didn't find was a significant amount of cracks in the foundation. There's very minimal cracking that I found in the 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 floor finishes and the hard finishes. Your foundation system on this facility looks to be a slab-on-grade, which should easily support the loads. The the way this facility was designed as it's for its original design, it should have plenty of capacity to support the intended loads. So what I did find when I was walking around the this side of the building, which is the south side of the building, which is the bottom of the was that? Oh, that was the wrong button, which is the bottom green line of the in the photo. I started seeing cracks, vertical cracks in the facade, which is the brick. And that is an indication of foundation movement. So the the west end of the building, which is that green area, is showing some signs of movement. The not significant movement. So there there's some settlement in the foundation, but no cracks evident inside. So the the foundation is in fair condition. The intended, I'm sorry. It ain't moving. And I don't have a pointer. Well, my apologies. In the photo on the right, I have a blown-up view. There's a crack right alongside that brick pilaster, that 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 brick that juts out, that's a pilaster. That is located on this this corner of the building. That crack tells me that the foundation is settled on on this back end of the building. So I'm going to try to move a little faster and try not to keep boring you. This is the second floor of the police station. That's a photo looking along the 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 floor and and what's happened there is that floor felt soft, and I see that there's some dip in the floor. And I don't know if the framing's damaged. I didn't do any destructive testing. The the facility is currently in operation, so I couldn't do destructive testing. So the, I didn't change the photo. The roof on your police station side, the the conceptual plan shows to install dormers on this side to open up the office space. The roof of that side is constructed of engineered lumber. It's it's very difficult to modify that. And the conceptual plan shows dormers almost out to the exterior wall, which would would be a problem if if to support that exterior wall of that dormer. That would have to be pushed out to the exterior wall. So you'd gain a little bit of room, but the the room that you're going to gain for the amount of construction that you're going to have to do on that roof, it it's it's not very, it's not going to pay off. It's not going to be very beneficial. You're not going to get enough space for the amount of cost that you're going to incur to take that roof essentially off and rebuild it to shave dormers to add headspace in the offices. With that said, my opinion on the foundation is that it's 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 a slab-on-grade, it's performing. It does move. Slab-on grades do move. That's their nature. What I don't know is if it's a post-tension slab or a conventionally reinforced slab. And the reason I point that out is there's, in the conceptual plan, there's plans to install new bathrooms or expand the bathrooms. And what you have to do to to do that is to cut into the foundation, which concerns me. What that would likely do over time, they show localized movement in any of the interior facade when you start cutting into the foundation and whatnot. And what's very important is if it's a post-tension slab, is not to cut any of the the post-tension cables. So that that's a, that's the one unknown. I don't know about this foundation, whether it's conventionally reinforced or post-tensioned. The, like I said before, that the roof framing on the west end of the building is engineered lumber, and you can't see it very well in the top picture on the right. That's what the the light is is kind of showing on the lumber. That's it it's a it's a made-up lumber of different pieces, and it's very difficult to splice into that. It's why I'm saying that roof on that end would possibly require completely being replaced if you were to entertain the dormer still. And also, I noticed on the conceptual plan that there was a gym and a significant amount of storage on the second floor. That's not typical of we don't see a lot of storage upstairs because it's very difficult to support. It can get very heavy. A stack of four boxes of file papers is a hundred pounds of per square foot. So it can get very loaded very quickly. So we 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 try to stay away from adding storage upstairs. I ran a few numbers on typical floor framing for storage and gyms, and I haven't verified what the framing is, but it doesn't appear that it's adequate. With that said, it's just additional cost. This is a significant remodel that we were comparing your current condition to versus what what your the conceptual plan is. And with that comparison, there's a lot of hidden costs that I can't identify when you start tearing into a building and start remodeling. There's always, always, always backing up before you can move forward. There's always retrofits that you have to do to strengthen members to to distribute load differently than what its plan was originally. For this area here, this floor should have been designed for a hundred pounds per square foot. Putting offices in here is 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 okay, because office space is designed for fifty pounds per square foot with assembly areas at a hundred. So this part of the building should be ample. It's the back part and its plan that is questionable. And with the cost that we've kind of captured and come up with for the conceptual plan versus a new, the 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 cost for the rehab or the the remodel is significant, significantly close to a new facility, which may Significantly close to a new facility, which makes this a difficult decision currently. There are other items that I cannot confirm, but my architect can. That will require implementation, whether you remodel this facility or build new. And it's to meet ADA and, and, and. More specifically, the elevator, the ramp to the community room. And the, the floor mismatch here between the two. And the stairs that, that egress the second floor on this end. The, those I need to see if there's some sort of stipulation in the code, which my architect will do. To see if, if those have to be modified, no matter what happens. Well, no matter what happens, if you choose the remodel or if we have to remodel, those will have to happen. To bring this up to code for ADA compliance. So with that said, I'm sorry, I didn't follow my slides very much. I wanted to kind of just talk to y'all. Running through slides is not getting the message across. The message is that current plans, the cost for the current plans are very high. And what you're going to wind up with is an old building that's been remodeled for a lot of money. And in order to make the next, to make a decision whether to remodel this building. Versus consider new, I think the next step would be to have our architect come take a look at it. And make sure there's nothing other than what he's, he, what he's pointed out to me based on conversations I've had with him. Explaining to him what this facility's makeup is and geometry is. It, it'd be prudent for him to come out here and take a look at other items. Notably, the lack of fire separation between all of the, all of the buildings, floors and walls. So there's a lot more that, that. Needs to be addressed and will have to be brought up to code now. Regardless of the remodel. So I apologize for running through that really quick and kind of. Scattered about, but if you have any questions, I would be glad to take them. Other than that, there are other alternatives and that's to reduce scope on that end to, to reduce cost. Or reduce footprint on a new facility to reduce costs or, or look into. Other materials of construction to, to try to bring costs down. But right now, these are very high level costs that were provided in the report. Any questions?
Ms. Danes?
So I, I mean, I, I read this and this is what I'm very interested in. It was not boring at all. I'm sorry if anyone up here gave you that impression. So I mean, I, you mentioned it, I think that reducing scope is probably the best solution. I mean, in my opinion, I don't think that we have leftover surplus budget to be able to afford. A massive renovation, nor do we have that capacity currently to afford a brand new building. I don't know that the voters would vote to, to issue more bonds in order to build a new building. I think that there's a lot that we can do with what we've got. If we do, if we do take a harder look at it and reduce some scope, I mean, I realize this building. Needs help. It needs, its functionality is, is not optimal for what we've got going on in here. I mean, it's a church for goodness sakes. We can all see that. So I, but I do think that it's not, I don't want to just throw my hands up and say we can't afford to do anything. I think something needs to be done.
Well, with remodel, there's, you could take it in steps. That not everything has to be done at the same time. New, that's not an option. The only drawback, well, there's a, there's pros and cons to each. Some of the, the negatives about this is working on it while it's in operation. That's a reduced scope will make that more palatable. So.
So if you're talking about ADA compliance and bringing it up to code, if that's all you did, I, I, I read that. I read your report and I'm kind of going, well, what you said, you either spend a lot of money to remodel or you spend a lot of money and then some to build something new. But I didn't see the part about, so what if you're just, you're going to bring it up to code and do the rudimentary things that. I mean, we've been living in this for 25 years with it not being up to code and all these things. And I'm just asking, what is their priority for that? And if we didn't do anything else, what are we looking at as far as a cost?
Well, until we actually, the architect takes a look at it and, and. Comes up with his list. I can't really answer that.
My car won't start and tell me how much it's going to cost to fix it. I, I got you.
That's it. I mean, it's, it's a.
But we, I think we can all agree, something has to, we're, we need to do something. I mean, after 75 years as a city that we can, we, we find a way and I. I, I believe the law changed as of September that a bond election is not required for a public safety. Building. I'm, I mean, we can check into that, but I think there are, there are ways that we could find a way to finance this. If that's what we decide to do when the time comes, should it come? Okay, that's all.
Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to mention that part of what's driving this study is, I think about five minutes after Mr. Rapley got here about five years ago. He made us aware of some functional problems within the finance and court area. And so I, I think there's a, there's a, there's a lot of functional problems here, particularly with respect to the comfort of staff. That we need to keep in mind as we decide what to do moving forward. The conceptual plan that was, that the gentleman was working with is, was done by, you know, our, our committee at CPAC. Comprehensive Plan Committee, mostly Mr. Mittelman and myself. And we were trying to solve all of the functional problems of which there are many. The idea of the dormers was to try to bring some natural light into the building. Cause there is, there is, you know, who, who would want to work in an office in this area, you know? But anyway, there, there's a lot of influences on this thing. And I, I think that what's been done structurally speaking is that you've answered our question. Does it make any sense to pour a lot of money into this building? Or should we more think more toward a new building if we're going to do anything? I mean, there's no commitment to do anything here. This is just exploration. But at the heart of it, we, we do have some functional issues that have a certain urgency to them. And that's space needs of some staff members. So I, I think we just need to keep that in mind and I would be in favor of, of taking the recommendation and moving. Forward with the architect portion of the analysis. So that we have an understanding of the codes, the ADA and the fire codes and all of that stuff. Cause that's, you know, there's a lot of costs involved in that. And I think as you pointed out, if we, if, if we start a remodeling, does that mean that all of that stuff has to be fixed anyway?
That's a good question. If you do it in stages even, does that preclude you from having to meet certain requirements?
Right.
Those all have to be answered.
But anyway, I, if memory serves, the architectural piece is another, is it 11,000?
I don't recall it.
It is 11. Y'all approved the comprehensive study to be done, but just in order. But again, I think as the mayor mentioned, we wanted to do the structural first, obviously. Mr. Lawrence here is recommending the, the architectural next. And by then we may not even need to look at the engineering and or no roofing component at that point. Do you agree with that, sir?
I agree with that.
So. Okay, so I, I guess from, if you would like to, to just move forward on that next step as a whole for transparency. But back in July, you had approved the comprehensive study. It was just a matter of what order to go in as directed by council during that meeting.
Yeah, I think prudence would be in order. So I would, I would move that we move forward with the architectural piece of it at this point. And hold off on MEP for the, for the time being. And proceed that way.
We have a motion by Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second?
I get that motion.
Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Mr. Rapley, where's the funding going to come from for this?
Well, all the 33,000 was originally going to come from seed. As designated that night by y'all. So if we just do the, what has been done, the structural engineering service fee. And the architectural service fee now, that's actually less than 20,000. The comprehensive study was 33K. So this somewhat of a savings just to do this next one by only going up to about 20,000 in cost. For these two components of this study.
Mr. Rapley, for the people that might be watching online, would you spell out what seed is, the acronym for seed and what that is?
Uh, the conversion, electric, underground, that's the, it's the funds we got from CPS back in 2011.
Okay, there may be people that are watching this.
2011, we got like 800,000 and it's been utilized here and there over the last 10 years. But as I mentioned during the budget, I think we had about 321,000, 24,000. For next year. So this is the, right now is currently the only expenditure this year in the FY 23 coming out of the seed right now, I believe.
Thank you.
Here we have a motion by Mr. Joyce, a second by Mr. Smith, all in favor. And Mr. May has his hand up too unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Thank you for being here with us. Okay, next up we have discussion of possible action on amending the Economic Development Committee Charter, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Joyce, did you have information on?
I might be able to help a little bit. It's a clarification that, that Mr. Schnall has worked out. And basically what we're saying is that the Economic Development Committee is an advisory body. And that has implications with respect to whether or not we need to follow the Open Meetings Act. And Mr. Schnall concluded that we do not as an advisory body. So it's, I think that's the essence of it. But it's, it's a matter of changing some of the wording in the charter, which suggests that we report to city council. It's very deferential to city council rather than being quite as independent as the first one around. But the, the committee we met, actually we had our first meeting last week and they, they had no problem with this. So it, it seems to make a lot of sense to do this amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. We have a motion. Is that a motion? Thank you, Mr. Joyce. We have a second. Second by Ms. Danes, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Next up, we have discussion, possible action on the procurement of a playground equipment from AOT Recreation in the Commons, Mr. Rapley.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is something that has been identified and recommend, recommended by the Parks and Projects Committee. I know that they have looked at various playground structures. And we actually went back two or three meetings over about a year. And finally settled on this particular one for the commons. For, for many reasons, the other ones were a little bit higher price after going back and looking at them through the vendor. But this one, I think does exactly what we need. It's a multi-use playground, two years old to 12 years old. Like I said, the Parks and Projects Committee recommending it. It's 54,000, 10,000, I believe I've put that in the backup. The 10,000 from the women's club and then another 10,000 through the corporate donations. And then about 34,000 would come from the ARPA. And if approved, they have a crew in San Antonio. Installation could be fairly quick within the next 30 days.
So potentially before trunk retreat or is that too close?
That would be my request.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Ms. Haley?
I'd just like to clarify that the women's club contribution was actually a gift that was given by Pat Legan in memory of his wife. The women's club has been taking care of that money. It's not, it was never our money. It was the gift from Mr. Legion. I want to make sure that that's clarified.
And I think I've let everyone on council know, if not, I've talked to another city who did a similar type of donations for a playground. So we're looking at having a little like stand with a plaque on there for the donations there on the side of the playground. To recognize sponsorship. So I got all the details from that city. Once we're ready to go, we have all the final sponsors on the $10,000 side from the corporate side. We'll order those and install those posts, which will have a recognition plaque for the support of the funding of the playground.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Ms. Danes?
I have a couple of questions for clarification. Can you, Mr. Rapley, can you tell us where on, in the commons, it's going to be located?
Yes, we have targeted the area closest to the fire station, I think between the two trees. We are close with our engineers, as Mr. Joyce knows, coming up with a concept plan to identify exactly where things may go as far as amenities. And I think we've targeted that sort of section and corner there between, between the two trees right there for the playground itself.
Okay, and what's the ground cover? What's the plan for that?
Uh, so that it comes with, the insulation comes with the, the fall zone, what they call. And I believe it's like the, the type of rubbery type. Grounding, I can't remember what it's exactly called, but mulch type thing that's put down. So they, they basically construct the area of the zone, lay that out and then install the playground. And then of course, part of this price is it does come with that cover, particularly for this playground.
Ms. Haley?
And TML insurance covers this in case there's some kind of a.
What we do is we add it to our asset list for, for.
Thank you.
But also we would probably put up a sign like every city does that says, you know, play it your own risk.
Mr. Rapley, the one thing that, not knowing exactly where it's going, I just want to make sure that it doesn't make things difficult. When and if we end up doing the solar panels. If that's going to be in the, in the way. So I would just ask that there's consideration for that.
No, I think the way that, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Joyce. But the conceptual plan that's being laid out has incorporated those panels and or shade structures. In certain positions within the commons. And I believe it puts the, if we potentially went with a solar panel swipe shade cover. It would put it right near the playground, almost right next to it, I believe. And sort of in the middle of the commons, but go ahead, Mr. Joyce.
No, no, Mr. Rapley is exactly right. And we had hoped, when we talked about the playground, we had hoped that there might be some shade for the moms nearby. And so I, just a little bit to the north. Oh, and that, excuse me. Just a little bit to the north of the playground would be one of the two solar panel shade structures. And we, we do have a plan in the works. Mr. Rapley has half an associates working on that. And obviously we'd be happy to, to show you all that. It's, it's going through a couple of iterations. But it shows all of the proposed items in, for the commons. Restrooms, the pedestals for statues, I'm sorry, for sculptures. Shade structures, playground. And all of that's sort of being coordinated into what we might call a little plan. For the benefit of, you know, at this point, it's still within parks and projects. But if y'all would like to see it, obviously it'd probably be done this week. I think the update will be done this week. And we'd be happy to, certainly happy to pass it on to y'all that.
Yes, the idea to, to have the plan reviewed and approved by the Parks and Projects at the end of this month. And then of course, we will take the next steps to look at shade structures and everything that will be presented in front of the Parks and Projects. And I don't know, Mr. Udomir is the chairman of the Parks and Projects, if he has any comments?
You've been with us all night. You have to have at least one comment.
Thank y'all for being here and considering the playground. It's a long time coming. We've been discussing it for a while now. And just want to thank all the sponsors and the, the city and the residents that want this playground here for the kids and for the community. So thank you and that's, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, any additional questions, comments, concerns? We have a motion? Mr. Joyce?
My move that we authorize Mr. Rapley to procure. I move that we authorize Mr. Rapley to procure and have install the playground equipment from AOT Recreation for the Commons.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. A second by Ms. Haley. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Okay. Next up, we have announces, I'm here and council members on items of community interest. Mr. Smith?
Um the mayor mentioned it earlier, but uh uh tr- trunk or treat will be on the twenty-eighth this year. I know I enjoy going with my wife and uh I hope you can come out and participate either by, you know, with your children, uh picking up candy or handing out candy. We'd just love to have everybody out there, and I thank the Women's Club for putting this on again this year.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Haley?
Speaking of children, I don't know if y'all know that we've got a baby boom going on in the city of Castle Hills. Babies, toddlers, there are some new families moving in and there are little children all over this town and in the future looks adorable. I just want to say, and the fact that we're putting these amenities together and offering something to the community like this is very exciting. And it's it's a it's a great thing and and I'm there are people all over town that your neighbor, you might have a new neighbor move in that has a little uh has small children, or they're homeschooling, whatever they are. And I'm trying to put together a mommy mixer at some point, mommy and daddy mixer and and have these young families have a chance to gather together. And that's I'm not not, I'm thinking about all that, and I'm always asking people to refer people. So if you know someone new in your neighborhood or someone who has small children, let's see if we can get them connected. So and speaking of connection, National Night Out came and went, and I want to thank the twelve residents who opened up their front yards to host a neighborhood gathering. Some of the people were old pros. They had a, they had a lot of people show up in their yard because they've done it. Several people had never done it before, and they had people come too, and I think everyone who participated had a good time. I think the people that came to the Commons and some people did both, as we had hoped they would do. They had a good time too, and I I look at these things as a big success because there were more connections made and more people that got to know each other better. And that's what a community is and that we can do that better and better. So and I want to thank Chief Zuniga and all the city staff for the hard work they did to put the event on at the Commons. They offered a lot of good information and things for for children. I wasn't there, but for a few minutes. But I know it was a nice event, and I want to thank you for your work, chief.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May?
I just, I wanted to wish everyone a happy eclipse Saturday. Uh the time for the eclipse is ten thirty and it ends at one thirty. The apex is around one. Make sure you have your authorized uh solar viewing glasses. Uh don't view it with your naked eye.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
I just want to let you all know that our Economic Development Committee uh is underway finally. We met last week and we're very excited. We have a great group. And we're hoping to provide some really good ideas to help our city be um uh even better place to live and better sustained over time.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Danes?
Um yes, I I I am excited about the solar eclipse. Um Mr. May is right. If you don't have your um proper viewing glasses yet, make sure you get them ordered and don't stare directly at the sun. Um and I believe our bulk shredding event is this Saturday from ten to
Nine to noon.
Nine to noon, nine AM for you early birds. There you go.
Thank you, Ms. Danes. You beat me. I am. Uh so Ms. Danes mentioned uh the shred day. We also have the passport fair coming up Saturday, November fourth from ten to two PM. So if you need to get a current passport, that is a great time to do it here. I do want to thank Commissioner Grant Moody for coming out to our uh National Night Out at the Commons. He stopped by. Thank you, chief, and everybody for putting on a uh great event. I want to thank Mr. Harada. I received a call uh a little unusual call, but I had a resident call and was concerned that somebody from Public Works ran up to his house and took his trash can. And he was concerned that somebody was going through his trash. But we I explained to him that he forgot to take his trash can out, so the Public Works team went and grabbed it for him. And so he was blown away that we offer that level of service and uh he it kind of solidified his commitment that he uh made the right decision to move into Castle Hills. Uh I also want to uh congratulate the three businesses that just opened recently in Castle Hills. We have Willow's Cheese Shop on Blanco, Clear Light Coffee on Northwest Military and Thirsty Pups Brewery, which opened and it's, everything in there is brand new. Every single piece of brewing equipment is great. Um they're super excited to be in the city of Castle Hills. They already have merchandise, shirts made that say Thirsty Pups Brewing, and it says Castle Hills, Texas. And I was so excited to see that, so I would encourage y'all all to go out and uh pay them a visit. Sure.
One last thing. One day this past week or week before, it's pouring down rain and it's trash day. And here comes the truck pulling a trailer because the trash truck was not operable at that moment. And here were, here were the Public Works crew walking in the rain, slugging the trash cans, making it work. And I just thought it it was a, it was a, I was glad I got to see that and appreciate you all again for making things happen the way they need to happen, and you all are the unsung heroes a lot of times of what goes on in our city. So thank you.
Okay, um I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
You have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith, all in favor? Unanimous is seven forty-seven. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being with us this evening.